Good morning, members. We're going to convene the Labor and Government Operations Committee hearing. Today is Wednesday, March 29, 2023, 10:00 a.m. We have nine resolutions on the agenda for today. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to run today's hearing. So, members, let's get right into it. We're going to do these resolutions in tandem between the House concurrent resolution as well as the House resolution. So I know people did testify on both matters, but again, we'll do this together. So the first measure up today is HCR 44, HR 48, requesting the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations to convene a working group to design a social insurance family program for the state. So first up, testifying in person, we have Director Jade Bhutai, DLIR.
Good morning, Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, and committee members. Jade Bhutai for DLIR. We support the intent of this measure, but suggest a phased approach. First, a working group procures a legal analysis and develops an implementation timeline and reports to the 2024 legislature. And working group determines the cost for implementing and sustaining the program based on actuarial analysis and provides a report to the 2025 legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Up next, Laverne Moore, HSTA. Testifying in support.
Yes. Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of OSA TUI, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The HSTA supports this resolution, and we stand on our written testimony. And I want to hit some key points. Teachers are fortunate because we are covered by collective bargaining agreement that provides us sick leave. So we can use our sick leave if we have to take medical, family medical leave. Where we have difficulty is for our young teachers coming in who take medical, they have children, and they have to take family medical leave. They do not have enough sick leave in order to go. So many of them choose just to leave the profession and become mothers. And that is detrimental to our teaching profession. At my school, three already left and to take care of the babies. So this is critical to retain the teachers. I want to make another key point. You know what? We have mandatory car insurance, mandatory to take care of our cars if we get hurt in the cars. We have mandatory home insurance. If you have a mortgage, you must have home insurance. You must have hurricane insurance. Why isn't we take care of our homes and we take care of our cars, but we do not take care of our workers in our state? We should have mandatory paid family leave insurance for all workers in Hawaii. It brings equity and family security for all living in Hawaii. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Hawaii Worker Center, Sergio Alcubilla, in support.
Good morning, Chair Matayoshi and Vice Chair Garrett and members of this committee. Sergio Alcubilla with the Hawaii Worker Center. I just want to take this opportunity to just sincerely thank you for working this session on this, on this issue. I know it's come through different years, and I really appreciate the pledge and taking the time and the interim to really study this issue so that we can figure out a way to implement it. Just wanted to say on behalf of our working families and the clients and communities we serve, just thank you for your efforts on this, and we hope that next session that we would have the actual steps actually implemented. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a few testifiers scheduled on Zoom. Nicole Wu, HCAM, testifying in support.
Yes, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Nicole Wu from Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks. Thank you very much for hearing this resolution. It does move us closer to a paid family leave program and urge you to support, to pass this bill. I stand on my written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Also on Zoom, we have Samantha Yi.
Not present.
Not present. Okay, thank you very much. That's all the scheduled testifiers we have for this morning. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anyone else on Zoom? Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed on to the next resolution. HCR 58, HR 60, requesting the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations to complete a comparative study of its policies on youth employment and federal requirements for youth employment under the Fair Labor Standards Act. First up, testifying, we have Director Bhutai, DLIR. Oh, sorry. Testimony in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. Jade Bhutai for DLIR. We stand on our testimony, operating comments on this measure that request the department to perform a comparative study on child labor laws. We suggest that another agency be tasked with such a study, as the Wage Standards Division currently has a 19-authorized position to administer six laws and does not have the capacity to take on additional responsibilities at this time. And we support a comparative study to provide policymakers with a basis for reviewing and considering the Chapter 39 child labor laws, as the law has not been amended since 2003. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director. Up next, Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii, in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Eliza Talbot, on behalf of Chamber of Commerce Hawaii, we stand on our written testimony in support and are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Also testifying in support, Hawaii Kids Can, David Mioshiro.
Aloha, Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, and members of the committee. Thank you for hearing HCR 58, HR 60. Hawaii Kids Can stands on our written testimony in strong support of this resolution with a few notes. As someone who proudly works directly with our local schools and employers, I've seen directly how lines become blurred between K-12 higher education and the workforce. The complex challenges of our current world demand innovative education practices that move beyond an industrial or plantation model. Students deserve and need dynamic experiences that enable them to develop into well-rounded adults with real skills to survive life's challenges and, more importantly, afford to remain in Hawaii. Concepts like career pathways and academies felt hardly talked about when I became a DOE teacher in 2008, but now they are fully mainstreamed. The disruption from tools like AI and ChatGPT are pushing schools to move even faster away from rote memorization and book learning to a focus on learning by doing. This resolution is critically important in that it helps our state more confidently tackle this growing gray area between academics and work. So much has happened in the decades since a formal review of current law has happened. This resolution is not about scaling back protections for students, but rather how we can make sure our processes protect and support students as education and learning becomes ever more flexible and fluid. We truly believe that HCR 58, HR 60 will help set our whole state up for success through the many unpredictable changes ahead to education, and we do hope that the DLIR gets the resources and support it needs to conduct the study. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the scheduled testifiers we have in person. Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone in the room wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Chair.
DLIR. Director, who, you said that your wages and wages division doesn't have the resources. Is there another division within DLIR or within another department that might be more appropriate? Because wages seems like probably the right place to put it, just jurisdiction-wise or subject matter-wise.
You know, I think it, I think it would be better if it was a third party, because if you're doing a comparative study, you want to make sure it's impartial, because if you're asking us, you know, you know, the way it is now, I think we would say, I think it's working fine, but I think it, so if you want to do a, you know, a comparative study, I think, you know, somebody that doesn't have the bias, I think, would be much more appropriate, like I think LRB would, you know, but I don't want to.
Throw them under the, offer them as tribute. But if we have experts in the, I mean, not everything in government works great, right? I mean, I think that the people in the weeds are probably the ones that know what's not working great, too. So I'm not sure DLIR is necessarily the wrong department to work on this. I just can't think of any other better one, and I was just wondering if you had a suggestion. So LRB, maybe, is that kind of the suggestion from DLIR?
That would be our suggestion, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next set of resos. HCR 82, HR 87, requesting the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations to provide and produce updated actuarial studies regarding the lifespan probabilities of surviving dependent beneficiaries for the purpose of applying Hawaii's workers' compensation law. Just one testifier in support today, Director Bhutai, DLIR.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. Yeah, we stand on our testimony in support of the intent to research and obtain updated data for the purpose of assessing appropriate benefit amounts to surviving dependent beneficiaries. You know, I'd like to note that we would require funding to procure a contract to fulfill these obligations and seeks additional time to present our findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Again, that's the only testifier we have for today. Anyone in the room wishing to testify? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none, thank you. Members, any questions? HCR 82. Seeing none, we'll proceed on to the next set. HCR 144, HR 146, urging the Department of Human Resources Development to establish a working group to examine issues and opportunities for improvement in recruitment and retention of public employees. We have one testifier scheduled for today, UPW. Testifying in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Kamakana Kamalo, on behalf of UPW. UPW stands on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none, thank you. Members, any questions? HCR 144. Seeing none, we'll proceed on to the next set. HCR 155, HR 156, requesting the Hawaii Tobacco Quit Line to make permanently visible on each page of its website information pertaining to the availability of translation services upon request. First up, we have the Department of Health. Testifying in support.
Good morning, Chair Matayoshi and Vice Chair Garrett. I'm Lola Urban, representing Director Kenyink for the Department of Health, and the Department of Health supports HCR 155. Oh, I'm getting old, have to put my glasses on, sorry. We do want to note that there will be costs for the modification. We have two websites for the Hawaii Tobacco Quit Line, and we're not sure who requested this HCR. We're glad for it because we have already started the conversation, and so we're ready addressing it. What the Hawaii Tobacco Quit Line does is provide interpretation services, not translation, because it's real time and it's oral. And so they can call the Hawaii Tobacco Quit Line. We have 200 languages that are available through interpreter services. We also have sign language, and we also have teletype, TTY, that's available. If a person wants to also be referred because they speak one of the Asian languages that's available through the Asian Tobacco Quit Line, we can also make that referral. So we're already working on accommodating this, and we have something called the landing page where we'll put the translated hot link for the Hawaii Tobacco Quit Line so that they can immediately then get the interpreter services in the language requested on this HCR. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have the Office of Language Access, also testifying in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Apuragbam Luwun from the Office of Language Access. So we stand on our written testimony in support. I would like to note that our comment is similar to what the department just said because the nature of the quit line, when people call, they would be able to communicate verbally with the operator, so the appropriate services should be interpretation instead of translation. And also, we have communication with Department of Health. They're already working on it, so maybe it's not necessary for this resolution. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all that we have scheduled to testify in person. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Seeing none, anyone via Zoom? None as well. Members, any questions? HCR 155. Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed on to the next one. HCR 156, HR 157, requesting the various state departments to reexamine their work-from-home policies to allow greater flexibility to work from home. Now, first up, D-Herd. Don't see them present. They did provide comments, and that was the only scheduled testifier. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Seeing none, anyone via Zoom? Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? HCR 156. Well, that's true. Okay, we'll move on to the next one. HCR 157, HR 158, requesting the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations to continue to recognize and accept the right of a provider of service to assign the right to participate in a worker's compensation billing dispute to a billing company. First up, we have Director Bhutai. Testifying, supporting the intent.
Aloha, Vice Chair. We stand on our testimony in support of the intent and recognize and accept the right of a provider of service to assign the right to participate in a worker's compensation billing dispute to a billing company. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director. Up next is Kathy Wilson. Okay, thank you very much. Testifying in support. That's all the testifiers we have scheduled today. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Seeing none, anyone via Zoom? Seeing none as well. Members, any questions? HCR 157. Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed on to the next one. HCR 61, HR 63, requesting the Office of Collective Bargaining to establish objective standards and criteria for splitting off a group of state workers into a new bargaining unit. First up is D-Herd. Don't see them present, testifying in, or providing comments, excuse me. Up next is UPW. Also providing comments.
Aloha, Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, members of the committee, Kamakana Kamalo, again, on behalf of UPW. We stand on our written comments, but we would like to note that we appreciate the Chair's efforts to create an equitable process to move these sort of proposals forward. We do have concerns about OCB doing, providing guidelines, considering for the last two years, they've stood in opposition to any, splitting off any new bargaining units. So thank you again for this opportunity to testify and available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next via Zoom, Maui Police Department, 911 Communications, Davlin Riccardio, testifying in support.
Good morning. My name is Davlin Riccardio, and I thank you, Chair Matayoshi, and Vice Chair Garrett and members. I feel strongly that our people now, people should be considered to be, have the ability to move from a clerical bargaining unit into a unit that is specialized for public safety. They do save lives, they work long hours, they work alongside of the police, the fire and medics. They're the first professional that's usually on scene that can direct and coordinate the They don't belong in a clerical, and I would just like your consideration. And I stand by my written testimony. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We also have testimony from the Hawaii Government Employees Association in opposition.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Steve Tevis here for HGEA. We oppose the rezon following up on UPW's in its current form. We believe the best entity, if criteria and standards were going to be put forward, would be the Hawaii Labor Relations Board as more of an independent, non-bias. So that's our opposition, is that it's OCB as the entity in the rezon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the suggested amendment. That's all we have scheduled to testify in person. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else via Zoom? Seeing none, thank you. Members, any questions? HCR 61. Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed on to the last resolution on the agenda. HCR 132, HR 133, requesting the Department of Accounting and General Services to provide menstrual products at no cost in state buildings under the jurisdiction of the Department of Accounting and General Services that are open to the public and contain public restrooms. Okay, first up, testifying is Nikki Ann Yi with the Maui Movement, testifying in support.
Aloha, Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, and committee members. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify. I'm Nikki Ann Yi of Maui Movement Hawaii. We stand on our written testimony, and I would just like to emphasize a few points. Menstrual products are a basic need, and this resolution is about public health, equity, and dignity. Menstrual products are no different from toilet paper, paper towels, or soap, yet there's this thought, or call it apprehension, that if we put period products in public spaces, menstruators are going to hoard it or vandalize these products. And I challenge that notion because in the last year, we have put period products in many more public spaces, like schools, a county park, and council building on Kauai. And you don't even have to venture too far, but to the second floor in the Senate bathrooms. And this is what we found, that those misconceptions are just that. We're here today to challenge the structures and systems that were built and designed without women's and menstruators' needs in mind. This is a basic need for every single girl, woman, trans, non-binary, and gender non-conforming individual that has their period. And this is a basic need that keeps people from going to school, from going to work, and from living full and productive lives. We can do better. And so the resolution is about correcting these structures in place and also about providing equity of access to public facilities. I wish the resolution could cover every single building and facility, but this is a good start. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, that's all the scheduled testifiers in person, but please note, we do have comments from DAGs requesting an appropriation to pay for these products, and you also note dozens of supportive testimony from various individuals. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify?
Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. On behalf of our cop patroler, Keith Regan, I'm Rich Louis, the acting CST Administrator. We support the measure, and we stand by our testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Please, Sergio.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Sergio Alcubilla and I stand here as a parent to an 11-year-old daughter, and I would just say this is very helpful. A lot of times, I'm with my daughter in public, and the only places we can find a restroom is in public spaces. And especially for her at this time, this would be a big help for her and for our family, and especially for me. Sometimes I really don't know what to do, and at least she's better equipped to do it, and if she has the resources in a public restroom, it would be a big help. So thank you again. I stand as a parent, providing in support. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else via Zoom?
One on Zoom.
Okay, please proceed.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair members. I'm Matthew Smedley, and I stand on my written testimony in support of HCR 132 and HR 133. It's time that we support those in our community by providing menstrual products in public restrooms. I really want to drive home the point that if all people experienced menstruation, public bathrooms would already be well-stocked with the appropriate products, much in the same vein as toilet paper or soap. And now seeing that it only directs half the community, I see it as a form of discrimination to not have these products available in public spaces because it does not directly impact men. And this bill would support and uplift a marginalized group and help to combat period poverty, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Appreciate your testimony. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? HCR 132. Seeing none, we will recess for decision-making. Seeing none, we will recess for decision making.